Okay, good evening, everyone who's watching. This is a Bowie Advisory Planning Board Virtual Public Hearing. This is a case that's being heard by the Bowie Advisory Planning Board for the city of Bowie. The project is the Bowie Town Center Amendment to the Basic Plan A 8589-04 for the former Sears parcel. I'd like to welcome everyone who has chosen to attend tonight and registered for this webinar. And I wanted to just briefly describe that this meeting is being recorded. We will have a presence on YouTube. We'll broadcast the video on YouTube as well as the webpage on the city website that's devoted to this project. For tonight's public hearing, how you can participate? We would like anyone who wishes to speak during the public hearing to go into the question and answer function in Zoom, which is at the bottom of your screen, and simply type in the words "wish to speak." And at the appropriate time after the staff and developer presentations, we will then go down the speaker's list of those who had indicated that they wish to speak. We will not be answering questions through the question and answer function tonight. We will not be acknowledging any raised hands or any type of communication like that. So people who sign up to speak will be given three minutes to speak during the public hearing and address the advisory planning board with your comments. At that time, you will be asked to, if you go beyond the three minutes, we'd ask you to keep it to three minutes. And at that point, your microphone will be muted again. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that the city council will be reviewing this case on next Monday, August 3rd at 8:00 PM. And if you wish to participate in that hearing, contact the city clerk through the city clerk's office to sign up to speak for that hearing. And so at this point, I will turn the meeting over to our chairman, Mr. Terry Rogers.
Thank you, Joe, and good evening, everybody. I'm now gaveling this meeting officially open. Today is Tuesday, July 28th. The time is now, it's approximately 7:05. And this is a meeting of the Bowie Advisory Planning Board Virtual Public Hearing via Zoom. And we will be discussing, it's a continuation of public hearing form from 6/23/2020. And the subject of tonight's meeting is the Bowie Town Center slash Sears property, number A-TAC 8589-TAC 04, docket number 2001. And we do have a quorum. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to staff Frank for your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board and the public. For the record, Frank Stevens from the City Planning Staff here to review with you tonight. Basic Plan Amendment A 8589-04 for the Bowie Town Center. The first slide we have on the screen is Attachment 1, the staff report. It indicates the location of the property. That's a subject of tonight's hearing. It's shaded in red. To the north is Maryland Route 197. To the east is Evergreen Parkway. And also to the south, and the retail core area of the town center is to the west. The size of the property is approximately 10.81 acres. This is Attachment 2 in our report. It indicates the zoning of the property, which is outlined here in the red border. Up in this corner at the intersection of 197 and Evergreen is the Best Buy. To the south is City Hall, the Stormwater Pond. And to the west are the retail stores and the rest of the town center. The proposed land uses for this case include up to 800 residential dwelling units in the form of multifamily townhouses, which not to exceed 150 units, possibly beds in assisted living facility, retail uses including shops and restaurants, hotel use with a maximum of 150 rooms and/or office space. The amendment to the Town Center Basic Plan is to increase the dwelling unit cap in the MAC zone of this Bowie Town Center property from 1,420 dwelling units to 2,090 dwelling units. The request does not include an increase in the cap of retail, commercial, or office square footage. On pages 2 and 4 of the report is background information of the town center, a history of the town center. The basic plan amendment is the first step in a multi-step process that includes subsequent steps, which include a comprehensive design plan, preliminary plan of subdivision, and a specific design plan. Those will be subject to future public hearings. On page 4, there's a discussion of the virtual stakeholders meeting that was held on June 16th for this case. Approximately 24 public attendees were at that meeting. And the summary of that begins on page 4 of our report. Pages 6 through 17 discuss the criteria for approval of a basic plan pursuant to Section 27 195B of the county zoning ordinance. And the detailed discussion of that begins on page 7 and continues to page 17. The criteria, the detailed discussion begins on page 7. And on pages 8, the report discusses the policies, goals, et cetera, of the county's general plan, Plan 2035, and those of the Bowie and Vicinity Master Plan. Pages 9 through 11 of the report, this discussion focuses on the unit calculation and the calculation of base residential density and maximum residential density. Pages 13 and 12 reference the county's comprehensive housing strategy goals and also refer to a housing study prepared by the Council of Governments and three regional housing topics discussed in that study. And these items are all building blocks that lead to the eventual conclusion and the recommendation contained at the end of our staff report. Pages 14 to 16 continue addressing the criteria for approval of a basic plan, where we discuss the economic analysis criteria on transportation facilities, existing or planned private and public facilities, environmental relationships, and project completion. Pages 17 to 18 discuss conformance with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and reasons for comprehensive design zones in accordance with Section 27. There's a discussion of the general plan characteristics of town centers, the purpose of the Bowie and Vicinity Master Plan, and goals for the town center, which are identified in that master plan, which include promoting compact mixed-use development at moderate to high densities and encouraging high-quality infill and refill redevelopment of existing commercial centers. Pages 19 and 20 discuss the purposes of the MAC zone in accordance with 27-49A of the zoning ordinance. The MAC zone is the zone we're discussing tonight, major activity center. Pages 21 to 24 of the report discuss public benefit features and density increment factors in accordance with Section 2746 of the zoning ordinance. And it discusses calculations and the potential number of dwelling units that could be achieved eventually under the comprehensive design plan. But at this point, the calculations are not required. They were done in the report and in the applicant's statement of justification for illustrative and informational purposes only. The public benefit features calculations will be done at the comprehensive design plan stage, which is the next stage in the process. And finally, on page 24 is the staff recommendation of approval with conditions. We've distributed those conditions to you all earlier today. The condition number one is in the form of a table specifying land use quantities for the MAC zone, which would be amended if this is approved. And the second condition, we differ from the applicant in terms of that condition. Our condition talks about a minimum of 10% of the new dwelling units constructed for individuals earning between 60 and 80% of the average income. And that should be determined at this stage, the basic plan stage. The applicant would prefer that that item be finalized at the preliminary plan of subdivision stage, which is a couple steps down the road. So that concludes the staff presentation. We'll turn it over to the applicant. And then afterwards, I think we can both entertain questions of the board if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Frank. All right, Mr. Antonetti, will you be doing the presentation?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chair. So thank you this evening for allowing us to come back tonight and present this case to you. This is a basic plan application. It's the Fourth Amendment of the Bowie Newtown Center. My name is Robert Antonetti from the law firm of Shipley &amp; Horn. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of the applicants here at SRT Finanz LLC. And tonight with me, I have Mr. Robert Ursini, a representative of Seritage, Mr. Joe DiMarco, engineer with Bowler Engineering, and Mr. Mike Lenhart, traffic engineer with Lenhart Traffic Consultants. And you want to thank Mr. Stevens for his hard work and his very thorough presentation and his staff report. There is a lot of history at the Bowie Newtown Center. And believe it or not, the records dating all the way back to when the zoning was placed on this property are not completely intact. But through the help of Mr. Stevens, we were able to piece together the tapestry of development that has happened over the decades in order to come up with a land use quantity and understanding of what actually is outstanding in terms of available residential density, commercial, office, square footage, et cetera, from the originally approved basic plan. I'm going to go to a slideshow. But before I start, I do want to focus on this basic plan amendment. It is an amendment of Lot 6. Lot 6 is what we're calling the former Sears parcel. It is a piece of ground within the totality of the MAC zone. The MAC zone is gross acreage is 246.4 acres for the Bowie Newtown Center. Lot 6 on the Sears property is 10.8 acres. This amendment is specific to the Sears parcel. And with that, if I just had your discretion, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can you see the first page of the slideshow?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Seritage former Sears parcel?
That's correct.
Red, okay, got it.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your indulgence. So this is a slideshow that we've tried to kind of put into context what we're here for tonight. This property was zoned MAC back in 1975. As Mr. Stevens stated in his presentation in his staff report, the basic plan is the first step in a multi-step zoning approval process in a comprehensive design zone. What you're looking at here is a historic document. It's an image which was approved in 1985 from the second step in the comprehensive design zone process, the CDP, or comprehensive design plan process. This gives you a picture back in 1985 of what the intent, where the uses were to be located within the Bowie Newtown Center. In the middle, which is the salmon color, that is the retail and office core, which was envisioned in the original, or the early iteration of the Bowie Newtown Center. And we are located within that retail core. Here's a satellite image showing the property and the area of amendment specific to this basic plan amendment. What's outlined there is the Sears parcel, Lot 6. Located on that parcel is a current 125,000 square foot anchor store, which was a former Sears store, which is now closed. It's a two-story building. And because it's a two-story building, it has presented challenges in finding opportunities for re-leasing to other retail tenants. Mr. Ursini can speak to that in a minute and the company's efforts to release the space. But it's really forced us to look at flexible options to redevelop this parcel as a mixed use, because we believe strongly that mixed use isn't just a fad in development. It is really the way of the future and what sites like this really, really call out for. Located on this property as well is the existing BJ's Brew House Restaurant, which was the former location of the Sears Tire and Auto Center. When that closed, the property was redeveloped, actually was knocked down and then redeveloped at the restaurant, which has been quite successful. With the pandemic situation aside, it's done incredibly well. And we really think it's a microcosm of what we're trying to achieve on the larger parcel itself, the 10.8 acre Sears parcel. As you can see out here, this labels all the retail, many of the retail amenities that are out in the Bowie Newtown Center now. And it really gives you a sense of how close it is to other uses, such as the city of Bowie's City Hall. So there's municipal services. There's the Bowie Health Center. There's the Bowie Senior Center, Bowie Gymnasium. There's the Safeway. There's other stores in line with the Washington Prime Holdings. This is an incredibly well amenitized town center. And it's a fantastic opportunity to re-energize this empty anchor site with a mix of uses that could help inject vitality into the remainder of the center, not just the Sears parcel itself. Here's existing conditions. As you know, the store is closed. It is being upkept, so it's not suffering from the broken window phenomenon of having a derelict building. So it is being maintained, but it's an empty building that really hasn't had any interest in a long-term tenant. Here is the basic plan sheet. The basic plan amendment that we're proposing is essentially two sheets. This first sheet is a copy, and I apologize for the quality of it, but this really is the best available copy of the most recently approved amendment of the basic plan. And what you see outlined in red is the Sears parcel. It's labeled the area of amendment. Again, this amendment is specific to the Sears parcel. Here is the second sheet. It's the basic plan itself, showing the Sears parcel. And the basic plan really is what the name denotes. It is a very basic, general view of land uses and access points. What you see here is general circulation patterns denoted by the broken lines. It's access points by the arrows coming in and out. And it does have a label of mixed use. What we're asking for here is a maximum of 800 dwelling units on the property. Again, as a maximum, they could be in the form of townhouses not to exceed 150 units. It could be in the form of multifamily residential units. It could be in the form of bedrooms in an assisted living facility. The market really hasn't supported all these possible iterations, but we want the flexibility with your approval and support to go forward and to bring these to market so we can continue through the multiple steps in the MAC zone entitlement process. And just speaking to those steps, although this is the basic plan, this isn't the last time that you will see us. We're fortunate enough to obtain approval of the amendment to increase the residential dwelling opportunities in the overall Bowie Newtown Center. Again, we're part of the overall town center, but we're asking for an amendment of residential uses just on this parcel. There is the next step, which is the comprehensive design plan, as Mr. Stevens mentioned. Comprehensive design plan is a bit more specific. It actually sets forth the regulations in which the property will develop. It talks to things such as heights of buildings, materials, potential footprints of where buildings may or may not go, general criteria for urban design, such as streetscape elements, lighting, things that would be the principles that guide the development of the site as it moves through the remaining portions of the MAC zone entitlement process. The next step is the preliminary plan of subdivision. Subdivision is, as you mostly aware, you've seen probably multiple subdivision applications. That's the application that goes into a deep dive into the adequacy of public facilities and looks at things such as transportation, fire and police response time, utility services, water and sewer, things of that nature. We are, again, we're not at that point. We're at this very initial stage in order to have the flexibility to advance to those later points. The final application really is, the entitlement application is known as the SDP, the Specific Design Plan. The retail core, including the Sears building, already is regulated by a specific design plan. It's been amended many, many times. It's included footprints and elevations for new restaurants, facade changes, expansions of the Macy Building many, many years ago, things of that nature. What we would ultimately end up with, if we're fortunate enough to make it through the basic plan, CDP, and preliminary plan, is get to an SDP and have the details for what specifically we'll be providing within the guidelines of those plans that came before. And the SDP will show specifically the number of units. It will show elevations, colors, materials, specific landscaping, specific lighting, specific public and private amenities for both the residential and commercial elements. I will state that this project will be of Lot 6, a mixed-use proposal. It will have a residential component if we obtain approval. It will also have the appropriate amount of commercial, which right now, Mr. Ursini can speak to it as to what the potential vision is for this, given current market reality. So if I could, I'd turn it over to Mr. Ursini. And if you just let me know, Rob, how to advance to the slides, I'll take a cue from you.
Great, thanks, Rob. Again, Robert Ursini with Seritage Growth Properties. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our company and then sort of what's transpired over the last year, year and a half with respect to this project. Seritage Growth Properties was created back in 2015. It's a publicly traded REIT. And we believe in the long-term ownership of our assets. We purchased 240 Sears and Kmart locations across the country for the sole purpose of redeveloping those locations. In the five years we've been in business, we have 100 projects that have started construction or are under development and have leased over 10 million square feet. Since we purchased this site back in 2015, our leasing team has been hard at work trying to lease this Sears building with no success for two main reasons. One is a difficult retail environment, especially in the department store segment of the retail business. And secondly, being a true two-story building has made it difficult to attract tenants. There just doesn't seem to be interest in those types of physical facilities from the major retailers. So because of that, over the last year and a half, we've really have focused on a redevelopment of the parcel. And you know, our goal is really to revitalize the site with a project that the city, along with ourselves, will be proud of, but also do it in the shortest period of time possible. You know, last thing I think either of us want would be to have this building sit fallow for a long period of time. We've had two stakeholder meetings on this project. We had one back at the beginning of 2019, where we discussed the concept of a mixed-use anchor. And the industry has seen quite a bit of success with this type of uses. As opposed to the traditional department store anchors, this really is a combination and a mix of uses of residential, retail, potentially office, hotel. Depending on the locale, those types of uses are determined. So it's really, what we're looking to do is create a place where people live, work, play, shop, and dine. But residential is a key component to that, because it creates a 24/7 environment, which is important to adding life, not only the daytime traffic or foot traffic, but also evening vibrancy. Bowie Town Center is an ideal candidate for this type of anchor. It's a walkable design. You have the amenities such as the grocery store, the bookstore, the fitness center, and the shopping and restaurants already in place. So over the last year and a half, we've been doing our due diligence to determine which of these uses makes sense here in Bowie. What we've determined is that new construction of office and hotel don't seem to be feasible. So we focused our attention on residential. And when I say residential, and Rob, maybe we can go to some of the additional slides. Okay, so I'll talk about retail and restaurants first. We think retail and restaurants make sense now. Obviously, we have the remainder of Bowie Town Center, which also has retail and restaurants. So I would think that our focus would be more on service retail that would complement whatever residential we would do. And we would look to just bring some new restaurant offerings, upscale restaurant offerings to Bowie. And in terms of the residential, maybe you can show, we're uncertain as to the exact type of residential at this point in time. You see here some townhouse, townhome designs. But we're also considering more dense opportunities being multifamily residential here. And you can see some images here showing those types of offerings. I would say, to sort of sum up, you know, this is the first step, as Rob mentioned. It's really the first step of a multi-phased, multi-year entitlement process. So we wanted to get the process started. And we started it even before we have a plan set, because we wanted to get this process moving along. And we hope that if we're successful in getting the basic plan amendment approved, that we would soon thereafter follow with a comprehensive design plan and a specific plan that you could, you know, review and comment on. This basic plan amendment will put the zoning in place for us to be able to create this mixed-use plan. And we believe it will bring additional vibrancy and life to Bowie Town Center. So I thank you for taking the time this evening to listen to our presentation and look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you, Rob. And you know, just to sum up, you know, the application meets all the criteria of approval for a basic plan amendment. It's consistent with the recommendations in the master plan, which designates the area as part of the Bowie Regional Center, which has now been superseded by the most recent update to the county's general plan, which counts the area as partly Bowie Local Town Center. The zone itself allows for residential density. It actually allows for density up from 10 to 47.9 dwelling units per acre in the Newtown category, which we're in. And the general plan itself actually calls for a maximum of up to 60 dwelling units per acre. We're not proposing anything to that level of density. But just to give you a sense of the range of what a center could involve. When we had the continued hearing, something that was brought up by Mr. Schoetz regarding fiscal impact, and we wanted to take the opportunity to go and look at And we wanted to take the opportunity to go and look at what the possibility of adding residential to a commercial component would look like. So we did engage sage policy group to compile some numbers based on their resources as to what type of revenue fiscal from a tax perspective would residential development really propose. And it's a one-page document and it looks at residential yield for both the city of Bowie and Prince George's County. And the total revenues for the city of Bowie per unit, per year, in a very conservative position, would be about $1,493. For Prince George's County, it'd be $3,830 with a blended total of $5,323 per unit. And we didn't apply it to, you know, all the, all the different density scenarios because we're so early in the process. Again, this application is the very beginning of a, of a long process in which we'll narrow down and determine through, through market interaction, what will actually be developed here. And we'll come back. Again, we have multiple hearings, multiple application types to come back to deal with the specifics of this. But we think overall that it will have not only a positive impact on this parcel. We think that it will help change the profile and really re-energize this end of the retail center, which should have a carryover effect into the balance of the retail core. We do believe a rising tide raises all ships. We're very excited to work with our partners within the retail core itself, the Washington Prime Group, Macy's and other individual owners, to come up with a plan that really is well-integrated, well-thought, thought out. And those details will come in those later application types. As Mr. Stevens stated, we did propose two revised conditions. The city had recommended two conditions. One, I believe we're in agreement on, it's a chart, which we took from the park and planning staff report, which came out after the city staff report. But it's really a nice summary of the development totals in the Bowie New Town Center for the MAC Zone. I believe with, you have in your record is, the city's in support of that, as Mr. Staff is in support of that, as Mr. Stevens stated. Where we do have a bit of a disagreement is on condition two, where the city is requesting now a 10% commitment for new dwelling units for individuals earning between 60 and 80% of the area's average median income. We believe that's premature. We're not opposed to the discussion. We're not opposed to developing the concept further. But hopefully, as I've demonstrated through this presentation and through some of the orientation, what the MAC Zone zoning steps are, we're just too early to commit 10% because we don't know what it's 10% of. We do know if we're lucky enough to get approved, what the maximum residential yield could be. But, you know, we may not come to that, or we may not come even close to that. But it's too early to commit to a program where the details really aren't known, the specifics aren't known. And, and the pro formas for the development on the lot, on the parcel really isn't known in totality. So we're not opposed to the concept. What we recommend instead, given how early we are in the process, is to state, have it revised where it would state condition two, at time of preliminary plan of subdivision, the applicant shall identify an appropriate percentage of dwelling units to be constructed on lot six for individuals earning between 60 and 80% of the area's average median income. This in no way prejudice the city's policy on seeking affordable dwelling unit possibilities. I just, I think, puts it in the most reasonable light, so we know what we're talking about. As I stated, the preliminary plan is really where you have the specific number of units and, you know, we'll know what that would be and then we'll be able to come to an agreement on the specifics of, of what an affordable dwelling unit program on this parcel will look like. So again, we're just asking for, for that to be determined at that later, more appropriate time in our, our respect, our humble opinion. So with that, I'm sorry I've blathered on for so long, but I do appreciate your time and consideration. And we're very excited to move this forward and we appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to try and answer them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Antonetti and Mr. Ursini, and also Frank and Mr. Stevens. Thank you all for both giving us a very thorough understanding of where we are in this particular project. Do we have anyone who has signed up to speak? Now, first of all, are there any questions from, from our members of the board?
Mr. Chair. I'd like to-
Mr. Scoats, I recognize you.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I just want to say a couple of things. In 1999, when this was put together, I was a rookie on the board. I was the newbie. And I can tell you right now that unlike a lot of other projects that are proposed, especially in this Bowie area, back then, we made sure that the project as it stands right now, one, most importantly, that the infrastructure was in place. Two, that it was a multimodal in design. And if you look pedestrian, you have transportation, you, you have all the public services, which passes, I think, all the ATF parameters. Now, I'm glad that the persons that are proposing the, the project did send in some fiscal impact information. And I just want to kind of go over this. I'm kind of a numbers guy from 40 years back. And I just want to throw out some numbers to kind of give people what we're talking about, the fiscal impact and what it means to not only Bowie, but also Prince George's County. Now granted, this is based on the 800 units. If they were to be approved, and again, we have a process that we still have to go through, we're looking at roughly $1,194,400 a year in the coffers of the city of Bowie from taxes. Prince George's County, an additional $3,064,000 for an aggregate of county and city of $4,258,400. Again, things change, but as far as conservative, and I will say conservative because, let's face it, the estimated impact of assessments are going to go up. And that money more than likely will increase. Now, when we get back to the actual start of the 800 units, going through the, what I call the bureaucratic dance, we're looking at a generation of $13,399,200 for our educational, for our schools in the county. We're looking at an additional $6,327,200 for public safety in the county. And for the city of Bowie exclusively, we're looking at $560,000 from permitting fees. I just want to throw those out there so people will understand kind of the fiscal impact of what we're looking at. And again, that's based on the 800 units. And again, I believe that's, that's a fiscal conservative quote. So I yield, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to get that out.
Mr. Scoats, thank you for that very insightful analysis that you did. And those numbers, I think, will go a long ways to helping people get a comfort level for the project. Do we have anyone else on the board who wishes to speak?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bird, I recognize you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Hey, my hat's off to the applicant and the whole team for a very thoughtful process thus far. And thank you for the detailed explanation and kind of overarching vision. I would like to direct my question to Mr. Ursini. Am I pronouncing that correctly, I hope?
Correct, yes.
All right. Thank you. You mentioned that over the last year and a half, since your organization has, has acquired the property, that you've been attempting, that you guys have gone out and done some due diligence and you've been attempting to, to draw in some potential vendors to occupy the space as is now, as far as the overall, the overall structure of the building. Can you just kind of talk to, talk to us and kind of tell us what kind of process? Did you go out and did you proactively seek people? Or did you put out the word on the streets and hopefully was trying to get some, some input from other folks? And then without getting into too much detail, what was some of the obstacles to the, the reasoning why you, you guys weren't able to close a deal with anyone with the given building structure as is?
Sure. So as I mentioned, we purchased the site back in 2015 and our leasing team went right to work. As I mentioned, when we purchased these Sears and Kmart locations, our goal was to, or is to redevelop them. So from day one, our leasing team has been working on our entire portfolio. Our first, our first option with most of these projects is to try to re-lease, what we call it, the box split, but it's a re-leasing of the existing facilities with new tenants. So that's usually our, our first focus. And that's really what we did here by looking at it. Our leasing team is quite prolific. As I mentioned, they leased over 10 million square feet in five years. It's almost unheard of how much leasing they've done. So you could imagine our leasing team has relationships, not only geographic relationships with retail, not only retail tenants, but all, any, any type of tenant that would occupy space in what I'll call the new mall or new retail environment. They have relationships with all the major retailers, all the major entertainment companies, everyone you can imagine that would occupy space. So with that, they, you know, have taken Bowie Town Center and, you know, have gone to all the conventions and utilized all the relationships trying to lease up the space. You know, this building, it, as I mentioned, it's a true two-story, freestanding two-story building. It's approximately 64,000 feet on each level. So, you know, there, there has been some limited interest for smaller tenants to take a portion of the ground floor. But as you can imagine, the economics don't pencil out if you're only leasing 25% to 50% of the building. You, you know, we, we, we need to be able to lease the entire building. So some of the other challenges, I think, in general, for, in location-wise, is over the last five years, there's been a lot of new development to the north, I'll say Watch Apple and Crofton. And many of the retailers that may have been potential tenants for this building or this site have located there. And so that has also provided a challenge to, to our leasing efforts.
Okay. Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think that's kind of leads, that's a good segue into my next question is, what is to preclude, or I guess you've probably done some sort of decisionering exercise. What is to preclude later on down the line after the development has developed, is, you know, near completion or substantially complete? What is that to preclude drawing new vendors in the future as well? Is it because you're saying that the overall configuration of the building being a two-story standalone dwelling is not very, is not very sellable, is not very attractive to vendors?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. The, the, it's the physical constraint of the size and the two-story nature of the building that is a limiting factor. We believe that, we believe that if we are able to develop some retail and restaurants with, you know, smaller footprint sizes, we believe that there's still a market in Bowie for those types of tenants. And especially if we're able to create a, an environment and community with residential on the site, we feel that will even be creating a demand that isn't there currently. So that will only help us in our marketing efforts for these, I'll say, smaller, smaller shop and service type retail is what we would probably be proposing.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Do you have anyone else who would like to speak or have any questions?
Mr. Chair. I would like to ask a question.
Sure, Ms. Avery. I recognize you.
So, Mr. Ursini, this kind of piggybacks, I guess, off of Mr. Bird's questions. You did say that you purchased several Sears and Kmart properties. How many of them have you redeveloped in this way?
We have, we have a number of projects that are in the development phase right now. For example, down in Aventura, Florida, at Aventura Mall, we're redeveloping our parcel there that was a former Sears. And we're creating, although it doesn't include residential, it, it has office, retail and restaurants. And that's under construction as we speak. And we're also working on a large project just outside of Dallas. We refer to it as Park Heritage. And that's a, that is a very large mixed-use project that includes multiple residential buildings, office and retail and restaurants. So that's a very large project that is also in the development stage right now. Because we're only five years old, these larger projects do take some time to get entitled and, and construct it. So I can't say that we have any that have been completed and opened as of yet, but we have a handful that are in the development stage or under construction.
Thank you. So, Mr. Ursini, I have another question. So are you aware of the concerns about development in this community? You know, we've had several developers come in and a lot of the citizens have voiced their concerns about having more development in the community. And he, this is yet another project of where you're bringing in residential development. Have you taken into consideration the concerns of community members and some of the things that they've had some issues about?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, one of the first things we did when we decided that we needed to focus on a redevelopment of the parcel as opposed to releasing the existing building, we had a stakeholders meeting. So that was back in January of last year. And at that meeting, we described all the various uses possible for the site and discussed this, as I said, this concept of a mixed-use anchor. And so we described the potential of residential, retail, office, hotel. And we actually received a very positive response at that meeting and at follow-up meetings thereafter, that the thought was if there is anywhere in Bowie that might make sense to do a mixed-use project that included residential, that this would be one that could be considered. So I, I would say that we, we were pleasantly surprised because going into that meeting, I had heard a lot of discussions and chatter about, you know, the concerns of the community regarding residential. So we were pleasantly surprised at that meeting, at how supportive people were of seeing, as I said, a mixed-use project that included a residential component.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avery.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, this, uh, question is, uh, for either Mr. Antonetti or Mr. Yousini. Um, that, um, Bowie Town Center property, uh, has a number of current, uh, retail customers or, or retail establishments. If, uh, those major retailers close, I, I'm thinking of Macy's and, um, Barnes and Noble, I mean, that will have an impact on the lot that you're looking to develop, and, um, just wondering if you have a contingency, uh, for that? That's, that's one question.
Well, I, I, I'll try to answer that. Uh, obviously, the retail industry is going through unprecedented times right now, so, um, the, I'm not sure what the future may hold, but I would say that by creating a community, a mixed-use environment and community, that our, our project could stand alone. That being said, we would obviously love to have a thriving retail center next to us. Um, all I can say is that I think that the mall industry, there's going to be some significant changes, and I think you'll see some significant, um, changes in the, in the malls, on how they're conceived, on how they're tenanted, uh, the physical layouts. I think all of that, over the next decade or so, is going to change, uh, pretty dramatically. But can I tell you what that will be at this point in time? I, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. Um, the other question I had, um, and may be a bit premature, I didn't, um, hear anything from Mr. Stevens or Mr. Antonetti's presentation about, um, traffic impact. Is that, uh, something that's coming at like a later date, or?
Thank you. Um, yes, I, I didn't touch on that, um, in earnest. It is part of the application. It's in the statement of justification. Um, there was a traffic analysis performed, and one of the benefits of being located in a developed town center is that much of the infrastructure is already in place, um, particularly the road network. Um, you know, this property is juxtaposed between, uh, US 301 and, and, um, and 50, and our study really took, um, a, a look at the uses, the maximum uses for, uh, uh, possible through the application and did a trip assignment as to where during peak hours those vehicles are, would go. And what we found is that the majority of vehicles, uh, would be headed towards, uh, US 50, uh, to go east or west, and, um, and that the intersections around it, that would be study intersections, um, that are study intersections for our, our application, really operated at a level of service that's acceptable, and that's really a testament to kind of the in, the investment in the infrastructure that exists for this town center, which was, you know, intended to handle, uh, a large, uh, mix of uses, including the retail component of our property. Um, you know, you do get to back out the 125,000 square foot Sears building in the assumptions in the background as part of that. Uh, one thing that is possible here, uh, may, uh, is that we hope to have this multimodal, uh, live-work-play environment as well, where we are proximate to office, um, government uses, retail, et cetera, where folks may not, uh, hopefully not have the need to travel to as many places by vehicle. Um, will it eliminate all vehicle trips from this project on the road? Absolutely not. Um, but it makes, makes that a possibility, and we, we think that's really a, a huge virtue of, of mixed use. So, um, the combination of those, those factors, um, you know, resulted in, uh, uh, a transportation study that showed that, that this proposal, uh, would meet the advocacy requirements, and it will be retested more specifically again as we move through and we refine the specific number of uses. Um, and by the way, it, you know, it isn't just residential uses, it will be some commercial uses, which, um, wasn't included in the tax fiscal analysis. So those would be additional tax, uh, revenue benefit, you know, the commercial tax base, you know, should benefit as well from both the city and county, um, although we didn't show that in, in our, our details here. We want to focus on, on, on what residential being, being really the focus of the amendment before you. Um, so, uh, so overall, yes, like, I failed to mention that in my presentation, but it is, it is part of the application and a finding, if approved, will be made that, uh, that we meet the, uh, transportation requirements at basic plan, and will continue to be required to do so through the later steps.
All right, thank you, Mr. Antonetti. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Trash. Um, again, I want to thank you all for a great, great presentation and great questions, and I do have one question, and that question is related to the affordable housing, um, uh, condition that staff, uh, recommended. Uh, Mr. Antonetti or Mr. Yousini, I understand that, you know, the numbers have not settled out yet in terms of what the, uh, actual final count of, uh, residences would be, but typically, do you have any idea of what, uh, percentage of, um, residents over, let's say, 100 would be dedicated to, uh, affordable housing?
Rob, do you want to talk about your experience in that, and then I can chime in?
Sure. Um, so, you know, my experience in, in that area, it's really been a very, uh, situation based on the, uh, type of project, um, that we're, that we're dealing with. Um, I will share my experiences with the, um, Melford Town Center, which has a condition dealing with affordable dwelling units, and, um, that's a much larger project, uh, and that has a requirement for 5% of affordable dwelling units, um, as part of the city's recommended policy. Um, it's not a one-size-fits-all, um, situation, and it really is based on, I think, in large part informed by the type of unit that you're proposing. Um, you know, we expect to, uh, develop units that meet market need, and that market includes a, a, a mix of, of income types. Uh, so, uh, so a one-bedroom unit may, you may be reasonably priced and maybe a condition such as this, um, you know, really wouldn't have that large of a fiscal impact on, uh, on the, on the projected pro forma budget for it. But without knowing this, you know, the specific proposal, it's really hard to do the calculus, um, and to agree to terms to a policy or a program that'll be probably, uh, spelled out in an agreement, um, which, for Melford as an example, we have an agreement with the city, which goes into, goes into nuance of how you, how, how the regulation is administered, um, you know, what the rent is, uh, how you deal with the units, how you lease them, if they don't, what happens if they're not leased for so long, um, you know, what do you do? Um, there's just a lot of detail that needs to come together, and it's, um, knowing all that, it, it's, uh, we, we feel it's, it's too premature. Doesn't mean that we, um, don't agree that the discussion needs to occur, but again, it, we don't feel the city's position and its policy is prejudiced at all, given that we have so many entitlements left to come back and, um, speak to it at, at the appropriate time, which is what we, when we know the unit type and the density number specifically. So, yeah.
So, so at what, at what point in the development process is it too late to get a commitment from the developer on, uh, the number of affordable housing units that they would be willing to allocate?
Well, you know, too, too late would, would be when it's, when it's constructed, I, I, I believe, but in terms of-
Well, I mean, so, so, so doing, uh, detailed site, and that, we know that that's probably too late at that point to, uh, have that type of discussion. So early on in the development process is when that discussion would need to take place. So we're early on in the discussion process now, so before we get to that, um, point of no return, when would we be able to get a, uh, commitment from the developer?
Uh, we're proposing the preliminary plan of subdivision, and again, that's step three in a four-step, uh, zoning entitlement process, and, um, and we, again, we still have another step beyond that. Uh, so we think that's adequate time for both sides to really, um, understand what this means in terms of commitment. Um, it will inform, you know, what type of development will be located out there. Uh, so, um, so yeah, I, I think that's, that's, you know, certainly adequate time and, and opportunity, uh, to, to, to develop that in, in earnest, in specificity. I think, uh, so yes, it would be preliminary plan of subdivision is our recommendation.
And, um, Mr. Stevens, do you want to speak to that?
Well, it's, it's been our experience that, um, we would prefer to have something earlier, like, at this time, so, um, we, we, we do get a commitment and, and the developer can then move forward, uh, in more of a framework, um, knowing what the, what the, uh, condition would state with respect to, uh, workforce housing.
So do you feel, uh, comfortable with wading into, what was the phrase you said, Mr. Antonetti? Uh, preliminary, preliminary?
Mm-hmm. I, I, I think, uh, we need to stay where we are, um, with, with the, uh, with the condition that's, uh, stated, um, uh, with the revised condition that's stated, number two, the city's condition.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Antonetti, it comes back to you all, is that a position, uh, is that something that's intractable with the, with the developer?
You know, I, I, I wouldn't focus it as, um, you know, us, you know, our position versus the staff's position necessarily, because that seems to be more adversarial if we're, you know, not in support of the concept. I, I, I sincerely believe that, you know, there's so many steps left that it doesn't prejudice the city's position at all, that, um, that this, you know, be discussed when we know what we're doing, um, in, in specificity. Uh, there's, there's many, many bites of the apple. Um, so again, we're not opposed to the concept, it's, it's just right now, we can't say, yeah, 10% works, well, but it's 10% of what? And right now, we're gaining the flexibility to do something, to develop a more specific proposal, but, you know, then we take back that flexibility, uh, by, by saying that it has to be this, when we don't know whether or not it, it works, uh, overall. So, um, you know, we look forward to, to having the discussion, um, we're aware of the policy, we're not opposed to that, uh, it's just, it's just too early, uh, in the process, and, and this, and there's ample opportunity to really develop it, uh, in, in great detail, um, the detail it deserves. Um, and we think at the, at the earliest, it should be preliminary plan of subdivision, and again, there's applications either even after that.
Okay, so, um, then for, uh, my fellow Boyd members, what I would recommend is that, uh, our, our opinion, whatever, which way, whichever way we vote this evening, it's an advisory, um, recommendation that we would be taking forward to the city council, and I would think that it would be prudent for us to make the city council aware that this is an unresolved issue that has, um, an opportunity to be resolved at a later stage of the development, but it is something that we should keep a radar. And, uh, it's a very important issue, workforce housing, affordable housing, um, it's a very important issue to the city and to our, uh, residents. Uh, it's something that we don't want to, you know, let it fall between the cracks, we know about it, and we understand that maybe now it is a little early in the process, but we're, we don't want to let the opportunity get by, and we have to keep a, keep a close eye on the phases of development so that we don't reach that point of no return where we miss that opportunity to have the, uh, uh, requirement put into place.
May I just add, may I just add one thing?
Please do.
Uh, I, I would just say that, uh, this, I believe this application or this project is somewhat unique in the sense that we're here before you with a basic plan amendment application without a site plan. I'm not sure you see many cases or many applications that don't have a specific site plan that you're discussing, and I would understand that you would want to resolve that issue as soon as possible in most applications, but I do think there is a unique nature to this application where we're before you, even before we have a site plan that we've settled on. So I would just have you take that into consideration. As Rob said, we understand how important, um, workforce housing is to Bowie and are open to the discussion. We would just like to be better informed on our side with respect to the actual plan. Um, and obviously, the plan and the economics and how we, how we lay things out, um, is important to understand when we come to that ultimate agreement.
Agreed, agreed.
And, Mr. Rogers, I would like to comment as well, um, that, Mr. Yousini, it is, um, also on our part, a little, um, unnerving that there is no site plan. So I feel like, um, you know, we're sort of like writing you a blank check to kind of do what you would like to do. You know, once we allow you to have this mixed use, is it going to be a, a multi-story? Is it going to be townhouses? Is it going to be restaurants? You know, we don't really know exactly what you're going to do, and so that is a serious cause for concern, um, on my part. I don't know how the other, uh, members of the board feel, but I would like to know exactly, uh, what you're going to do.
Right. And you'll, and you'll have, as I said, multiple, multiple opportunities in the future when we come before you and present the plan, you'll have multiple opportunities to comment and, and make your recommendations, uh, you know, so you'll have plenty of time. I wouldn't look at it as a blank check, I look at it more as a canvas. We're, we're creating a canvas that we can now put together, um, a project that, you know, will be acceptable to, uh, to the community and, and the city of Bowie. So, um, you know, uh, and, and the reason why we're doing this without a site plan is because we wanted to get the process moving as quickly as possible. If we waited until we had a, had a plan in place and without knowing that you have the residential zoning in place, it makes it very difficult to commit to moving forward with a plan. It's kind of a, a chicken and an egg in a sense, and so by doing this, it gives us the, or affords us the ability now to go forward and really create a plan that meets the objectives, um, of, of ourselves and the city. And I think that we've shown that very early on, we've been an open book. We, as I said, we were, uh, over a year ago, we had a stakeholders' meeting and simply laid out the various uses and tried to get feedback and then receive feedback from people in the community. So, um, I, I, I think we've been, you know, uh, an open book with respect to this project and are hoping to get that feedback so that we can come back to you with a project that, that, that you're supportive of and ultimately approve. But there, again, there's multiple steps, uh, that you'll be able to see and comment on whatever application we move forward with or whatever plan we move forward with in the future.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Schoach, yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, these are really kind of, uh, targeted towards the staff. Um, we received a, um, an addendum today, I guess, to the information, and I just want to make sure that the staff, um, you know, confirms this. Um, currently, the project was approved for, uh, what, 1,225,000, and it's basically saying on here that 441,468 is, uh, remaining. Now, does that include the Sears property as it is, the Sears building? Uh, I just want to, you know, have that information for the council next week, um, because right now, we're looking at 36% that's still buildable. We're looking at the office, um, again, 900,000 square feet that were, uh, you know, approved, 529.5, so basically 58.8%, which is a tremendous amount of office space that still can be developed. Now, getting down to the residential units- And getting down to the residential units, like I said, you know, I was a newbie back in 1999. We started negotiating this stuff and actually way before then. And one of the issues that we had then, I don't know, a lot of people may not have been here at that time and probably weren't. But where the shopping center stands now basically was a bunch of trees. And of course, the environmental impact was a big deal. Now, when we actually started to put together the shopping center itself, back there in the 90s, the 80s, the 70s, the development plans for malls were basically under roof. When we did this plan, one of the biggest competitors that we had, and we tried to make sure that we weren't, was the Westfield property in Annapolis. They were our big competitors, or soon would be our big competitors. Thus, we pretty much demanded back then that we wanted a Main Street concept, which meant how you see the shopping district didn't just overnight come like that. That was basically demanded. Now, one of the things in a Main Street concept is residential. Now, as you can see, and again, I want to confirm with staff that it looks to me that there's still 130 dwelling units that basically can be built. Thus, the applicant is coming in for an additional 670 when you look at it. To the applicant, we had a very, very difficult issue a while back that has led to the attitude of a lot of us Bowieites. I personally live a few blocks from this project that was a hornet's nest. And one of the things that we failed to recognize, and I hope that you guys, because let's face it, the affordable housing, the 10%. And we're looking right now at 13 units, if you guys go to 130, up to 80 units if you go out and build added 800. You know, we're getting our asses, excuse the language, kicked by other jurisdictions. The city of Bowie residents are getting older, I included. And one of the things that we are not trying to promote, and we have all the amenities to promote it, is senior housing. Take into consideration, applicants, please, that as part of that 10% that is being requested, and I approve that condition, that think out of the box at the senior community and what could be put in there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem, thank you, Mr. Schoets. All right, do we have anyone, any other questions before I open it up for public comment? Okay, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have a couple people signed up to speak. This is Joe Minard, I'm the planning director for Bowie, and I'm trying to help with the logistics of the public hearing tonight. The city received three correspondence, pieces of correspondence from the previous hearing in June, and we indicated that we wanted to make those comments part of the hearing record. So I can read those very brief emails to you as part of the record this evening.
And also, yeah, do that, Mr. Minard. And also, just for the benefit of those participants who may have signed on late, please instruct them on what they would need to do if they want to be recognized to speak tonight.
Okay, I did want to cover that. The way handling the logistics of this hearing is that if anyone who is attending wants to speak as part of the public hearing, you'd simply need to use the question and answer function at the bottom of your screen and type in the words "wish to speak," and you'll be included on the speakers list. We will go through the speakers list sequentially as the people have signed up. And each person will be given three minutes to speak to the board. At that point, your microphone would be muted and there would be no further input from the speakers. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and read into the record the three emails that I received for this case. The first is from Mr. Larry Randall. It was an email received on June 20th. Mr. Randall writes, hello, Mr. Minard, my question is, why build housing in the area of the old Sears parcel? My understanding that we're moving from dense populations building. We need to try to reach out to commercial corporations to increase our tax base in Bowie. We have too many housing projects going on now. Has a traffic study been done on the impact of this proposed new development? The Bowie Town Center is struggling now to survive. Most stores have moved to more affordable rent spaces. I strongly recommend you revisit your plans for development of the old Sears parcel. And that's respectfully from Mr. Larry Randall. The second piece of correspondence is from Althea and Tressa Bell Burton. It was in an email dated June 23rd, and the input is as follows. Hello, Joe, I was on the Zoom call that was rescheduled for July 28th. I would like to submit a comment on the development of the Bowie Town Center. Can you consider using a portion of the property to build an apartment complex for artists of all types similar to one in Hyattsville? And/or build a facility for artists to sell or display their works like the torpedo factory in Alexandria, Virginia? It would provide a fiscal impact to the area and forum to highlight local artists or artisans. Thank you, Althea and Tressa Bell Burton. And the final input that we received was from Lorna Lang, and this was just received yesterday. And Ms. Lang writes, hello, I live steps from the Sears building. I would love to see more restaurants/entertainment. Definitely not the right fit for any type of assisted living or residential properties. The Town Center has already been dwindling during my 10 years as a homeowner in this area. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my opinion. So those were the three people who had sent correspondence to us. And at this point, I do have three other people signed up to speak under the question and answer section of the sign up list. And the first speaker would be Ms. Andrea Jones. And I will try to unmute Ms. Jones and allow her to speak. And Ms. Jones, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Andrea Jones. I actually live within two blocks of the Town Center. And I have multiple questions. So just overall, I'm against the building of the apartment complexes there. And I have concerns about the commercial rental space because Bowie Town Center is struggling as it is. So the questions that I have is, is the impact on current townhouse, is the current impact on the property values, on current townhouses? Has that, have you looked at that? The concern is that it would go down for the property values. The other question is, what tax relief are you using, are you seeking associated with this development? And then the other one would be, so we do have, I think, on the other side, next to the fire station, and also on the other side of the Town Center, there's apartment dwellings. Are you getting some, from my understanding, they are not at 100% occupancy? So I wonder why we were doing that development? So I would like to see some of the anchor stores and more marketing toward that to build it up, but not the residential property. And the other concern I have is the impact on schools in the area. And are you adding to the infrastructure regarding that, the impact that's going to have on schools? Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Orsini or Mr. Antonetti? Or Joe, are we answering questions?
No, we are just taking testimony at this point. And after that, Mr. Chairman, the developer's attorney can respond. The next speaker that we're recognizing in tonight's list is Michael Bridges. And I'm going to turn on the microphone for Michael Bridges. Mr. Bridges, you have to unmute your microphone from your end as well. Okay, we seem to have a problem here with Mr. Bridges. Let's, okay, he's unmuted now, so.
Sorry about that, I'm doing this from my phone, it's the first time from a phone instead of my computer. I don't really have a lot to say, I just have maybe one question and another comment. The question is, I think Ms. Antonetti said there was a traffic study that was done. Like, maybe you can ask afterward, answer afterwards whether or not that would be made available to the public to review. And then the second comment is, I was just wondering if the proposers of this plan could talk a little bit more about why commercial office space has been difficult to attract to the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bridges. The next speaker on the list is Michael Rauk. And I'm going to allow Michael Rauk to speak.
All right, can you hear me, Joe?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to take a quick moment and say thank you to the Bowie Advisory Planning Board. I know they're volunteers, I want to recognize, you know, Terry, Elisa, Deirdre, Mike, Ron and Carl. Thank you, guys, I appreciate you. And also just want to recognize city staff, you know, Joe and Frank, I learned so much from you and I just wanted to say appreciate you. Aside from that, just my thoughts on the project is I actually do approve of the project. I do believe that the Town Center needs revitalization. I think that this is going to help with that effort. You know, one thing that's different about this project than some of the others, you know, when we talk about Melford and Southlake, they give some lip service to mixed use, but it's always, you know, they're planning residential with the hope that retail will come. In this case, we actually already have retail, and then you can add the residential and you get the mixed use. So it's a better plan for success. And sorry, Mr. Antonetti, about the Melford dig there. The other thing, though, that is a conservative mine is that if you look at the Bowen property and if you look at, if you drive down Health Center Drive in the morning or the evening, the Bowen property, I'm sure when it was designed, it had the appropriate number of parking spaces per county rules. But of course, it requires overflow parking on Health Center Drive. If you drive through Lanham on State Route 193, you can imagine a state route, people are parking on the side of a state route because their apartment complexes don't have enough parking. And so what's interesting about this property, and I'm sure it's like all the heritage properties, whether it's, you know, Dallas, Chicago, Redmond, Washington, all the properties that they're working on, it has neighbors that are very close by. And so if we don't have adequate parking for this residential, you're quickly going to be encroaching upon your neighbors. And so I think that the neighbors in the Town Center, of course, they wouldn't mind having additional parking issues if it's going to bring them additional revenue for their restaurants and stores. But at some point, there's a tipping point where people may want to stop coming to the Town Center to go to the restaurants if parking becomes an issue. And so I just want to make the point that you can quickly encroach on your neighbors with this project, whereas with Melford and Southlake, they've got all sorts of room. And so if they create any kind of parking, it's going to be within their own communities, but it's not going to affect their neighbors. Another thought I had is that the Best Buy property is kind of going to look, is going to look almost silly there all by itself, that the little store compared to these buildings that might be four or five stories high. And I don't know if the developer, I was hoping when the developer postponed this meeting by a month, I was hoping that they might say, hey, we were talking to Best Buy about incorporating that property into the mix, because that certainly would be interesting to see that, otherwise it's kind of standing there by itself. And I think it would make it, it would make things flow much more nicely if that was part of the property. And then my last thing was, my last comment was about the affordable dwelling units. Just a question for staff is, I didn't know what was meant by affordable dwelling units. Is it that the units are going to be made, that their market rate will be affordable? Or is it that it's going to be somehow supplemented by funds to make it affordable? Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Rauk. The, we have one last speaker who has signed up, actually two more. The next speaker is Mr. Lorenzo Ferguson. And I'm at this point going to unmute Mr. Ferguson. Go ahead, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, sir, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, how you doing? My name is Duane Ferguson, and I am also a homeowner right across the street from the Sears building. I just want to, I just have this one concern. One is, just to let you know, the developers know that there are five developments within one mile of the Sears town, the Sears building and the Bowie Town Center. You have the Covington area, the Essington neighborhood, Palisades, Heather Ridge, and I believe the gentleman just mentioned Bowen. So I'm really not keen on the ideal of providing additional dwelling units in an area that's pretty much densely packed. But what I would like to say is, this is a huge opportunity for a home run, if this is done right, to redevelop the Bowie Town Center. But if it is not done right, home values are going to suffer for that. And this area may turn into a largo Town Center area, pre-hospital area that won't be good and have long-term impacts and implications for this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Our last speaker this evening would be Sue Lovera. At this point, Sue Lovera, you need to unmute your microphone and go ahead.
Can you all hear me? Oh, good, good evening, thank you for all this good work. Now, I'm here to cause good trouble in honor of John Lewis, among other folks who think outside the box, because that's the way I think. Some of you may know me, I've been chair of the green team for the last four years, and I'm very involved with the whole environmental thing. And at some point, whatever happens, you're going to hear more about the climate action plan and whatever goes on has to. But here's, I want you to go open that box wide up and think totally differently. And for the developers and the planners, I appreciate your work, but I don't hear anything new. I hear pre-pandemic thinking. I don't hear what's going on to be creative. What I'd like you to do is to think about a different use for this within the school system. I know the schools are interested. Because of the way the pandemic has affected learning, they're looking for alternative sites to, and I don't, it's also new. I don't think they can exactly tell you, but I have it on good word that the CEO of the school systems is very interested in looking into this. Now, it's just totally different. I am very opposed to any more housing, just opposed to it. But envision that Town Center, be in the vanguard. Get rid of the driving and what I call the cross streets. Make it a pedestrian place, open air, very European model. Or I think Michael Estev in the council has a model from, I think it's Charleston, South Carolina, that he will ask Or I think Michael Estev in the council has a, a model from, I think it's Charleston, South Carolina, that he will ask you about, I believe. So I really want you to think outside that box. If you want to talk to the school people, I'll make it happen for you. Because I think there's something here that is, we just have to think differently. And I'm going to refer you to the Washington Post magazine on, it was two Sundays ago, July 19th. The feature article has called, "Has the Pandemic Shown Us What the Future of Architecture Should Be?" And I really encourage you to get a hold of that and look at it. It's inspiring and there's, there's plenty more of that. So I, I would ask just specifically to housing anyway, what is the market need? I have no idea. So that's my idea. Honor John with that good trouble stuff and think differently. I don't hear different in any of this proposal. I've been twitching for the last hour listening to this and it's just the same old, same old. And again, I appreciate that, but look around our environment. We don't need any more of anything that's sort of the same. But there's so much potential to have a center for children, for young people. You know, the city has been looking for another high school. And that's not exactly what we're talking about, because this is post-pandemic schooling. You have a downtown that has like, are you know the, the whole Starbucks community centers that they develop? There's one in Bladensburg that just opened and it's really cool. They have a Starbucks and then you've got a community center where young people can congregate. That's the kind of thing that we need to do. So I encourage you, think outside the box. I'll see you Monday at the council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Laverre. And Mr. Chairman, that's all the people we have signed up to speak this evening, so turn it, turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Minier. And again, we've heard some great comments from our citizens who we are here to represent and get everybody comfortable with at least the preliminary plans that have been laid out before us this evening. So with that, if there's no other questions or rebuttal statements that the applicant would like to make? Are there any?
I, I would just like to state on behalf of the applicant, we appreciate the opportunity to come here before you, hear your questions, hear the questions from the community. There were many, many questions that we just heard and I wouldn't do justice in answering all of them. I, I just, just very quickly, I'll do my best. You know, current impact on property values, you know, coupled with another comment, you know, if we do it right, this will be a home run. That's, that's the philosophy we subscribe to. We want to do it right, we want to have, you know, have a home run that not only raises the fortunes for our parcel, the retail core, but the properties that are around it. This is a unique opportunity. There's really no other location within the city of Bowie that would have a mixed-use opportunity like this in a prop, in a project that has the infrastructure and that has all these amenities. It's one of the most heavily amenitized projects I've ever been involved with, and we named a bunch of them. But we think it, with, with thoughtful design and care, which we plan on doing with partners from the market, that we will have something that will be a home run and we'll all be proud of to move forward with. In terms of tax breaks, we haven't discussed any tax break relief from any governmental entity, including the city or a county. Certainly, we wouldn't be adverse to any, but that is not something that has, that has factored prominently in our pursuit at this point. In terms of the traffic study, it is available. It's an exhibit to the staff, to my statement of justification, which I believe is in the backup to Mr. Stevens' report. But it is available for public consumption. You know, in terms of, you know, thinking differently, yeah, we, we want to. This, this is something that, you know, we've shown iterations even all the way back a year ago of what, of what's possible out here, of how, how the intersection of commercial and residential development, 24-hour activity within a center really could look like and, and, you know, why that's, why that's valued in the marketplace more and more as, as we head into the development future. So we want to be part of that, we think this is an ideal location. We're just at the beginning of this. We don't have a site plan because that's how the zone is set up. And that's, you know, this is a step we have to take to show this general, very general, basic plan as required by the MAC. But we very much look forward to bringing forth later applications that's, that are going to show these details, reveal them. And, you know, hopefully, we're, we're going to have something that we all can be very proud of. So again, that's, that's my global set of answers to many fine questions and comments. And Rob, I don't know if you have, Robert, do you have anything else you'd like to add? But we do appreciate your consideration of this request.
I, I just have a couple, a couple of things that I could touch on for some of the questions. With respect to Andrea's question on impact on schools, you know, each of the residential units would be subject to a, a school proffer of approximately $16,750 per unit. So that would go towards, or each of the units would go towards improving the school system. Obviously, all, all school improvement is under the county jurisdiction, so they would be up to them as to what the capital projects and various improvements would be and how they would use that money. With respect to Michael's question on commercial office, the construct, essentially, the construction cost of new office buildings is not supported by the rents in the market right now. And, and so when we did our due diligence on that, we just weren't able to make, make the numbers work. Although Bowie is a relatively strong sub-market in Prince George County, it's a relatively small market too. So unless there was a specific tenant in mind, but even so, it'd be difficult to make those economics work. With respect to Michael's question regarding parking and how it might impact if there's not sufficient parking on the site, how it may impact the surrounding community, I, I think one of the great benefits of this, of being part of Bowie Town Center is the reciprocal parking rights that the, each of the parcels have for overflow parking. So when you're looking at adding a different use that has different parking requirements and time for parking, I actually think that this would be a situation where it, it would be less likely that you would have parking impacts that would spill out onto the surrounding roads. It more, most likely would be absorbed within the parking currently provided within the entirety of Bowie Town Center. And I think that is, oh, let me just see, I think that's all. And with respect to Sue's suggestions, I, I'm fully, you know, I would love to pursue that and have discussion with respect to, you know, a possible user for the existing building and come up with a creative use. So Sue, if you want to pass on any information through Joe or Frank, I'm happy to follow up on that and see if there's something that we could do here outside the boxes, as you suggest. So, you know, all good questions and I appreciate the feedback. This is the type, exactly the type of feedback that, you know, we like to get on these, these, these calls and we appreciate it.
All right, with that being said, I will declare that the public hearing portion of our meeting has closed. And I'll turn now to the other board, our other board members for any discussion. Any discussion from our board? Having one, one final try, any discussion from our board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I want to go back to the conversation regarding the affordable housing, workforce housing. I believe where you kind of ended things, you were simply going to share with the city council that it's an unresolved issue that can be addressed maybe in the next phase. I, I'm not, could you talk about that again? I apologize.
Sure. There's several stages to this development process. And we want to guard against, what I would like to guard against is us reaching that point of no return, where it's too late for us to get a commitment from the developer on the number of affordable units that they would be willing to dedicate. So during the next hearing, so Mr. Stevens will probably be easier if he tells us what the next hearing or the next step in this process would be. It's not going to be a detailed site plan, that's way down the road, but preliminary site plan, is that next? Is that on the horizon?
Now, the next step is the comprehensive design plan. When there are more details provided, as was indicated earlier, there are design guidelines that are set, parameters. The information regarding the public benefit features are provided. Things along those lines, which can, it's more of a, a, a bubble plan, yet it's got parameters to it. And you would get an idea of, of more, the number of units and the, and the amount of square footage that would be, be coming down the pike. It's not, it's not absolute or fine-tuned, but it's, it's closer to where we are now.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to have at least two more bites at the apple when the developer or the applicant comes before us. And it's just incumbent upon us to make sure, and I'm sure staff is going to help with this, to keep an eye on what those numbers are going to look like in terms of the numbers of units that they're going to propose and the percentage that would be dedicated to affordable housing or workforce housing. So it's obvious we're not going to get that tonight, but we do have an opportunity as we move forward. So we won't miss, we won't miss out on continuing to work this issue.
And. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. The other topic was the subject of the traffic study. Now, at the next phase that Mr. Stevens talked about, is that where the traffic study will also be presented? The findings of the traffic study?
Mr. Stevens?
There will be another traffic study submitted with both the comprehensive design plan and the preliminary plan. Again, each time, the information is, is more and more refined. The, the traffic study at preliminary plan stage, when adequate public facilities are tested, is, contain the, the, the most detailed information, projections, trip generation and things, and intersections impacted that we would get along, along the way. So with the CDP, there will be some additional traffic information and traffic study presented. But there will be even more information at the, at the stage after that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So having said that, to kind of piggyback on what the applicant has mentioned in terms of this being a Kansas, so we truly do have an opportunity to work together and develop a project that's going to be meaningful, sustainable, and acceptable to the citizens that we represent. So as we keep these things in mind, thank you very much to the applicant for coming to us early, early in the process. I feel the frustration of some of my board members by, you know, there not being a site plan or anything like that to work with. But together, hopefully, we'll be able to continue to put the port together as we move forward.
And Mr. Rauk, I just wanted to make a comment that I am happy that Mr. Asini is open to the out-of-the-box thinking on what this project might be. I think often, when we're talking about development in our city, there is always a default to residential development. I think the citizens deserve consideration for some other things, not just new neighbors. I think, you know, there is the possibility to, you know, have just something that could work for everyone. We just have so much development in this city. And every time someone buys land here, it's like they only feel like the only thing that they can ever do is to subdivide some townhouses or to build another residential building and to have people move in. And it doesn't work for us. It doesn't work for the citizens that are already here. It doesn't work for our property values. It doesn't work for our schools. It doesn't work for our traffic. It doesn't work for the, just all of the things that take place when it comes to having a bunch of new citizens moving into the city. And it's not like we're not welcoming them, but it would be nice to see something else. When I travel, you know, I love to go to different places, different restaurants, to be able to walk into an open-air market. There are just so many things that, that are just out there that we can do. And we don't always have to go to this default of residential development. So I just want you to just take that into consideration when you're thinking about what you're going to do with this property. You can do something else. And I think it could work and it could work very well. You might be surprised at how much participation you would have from the citizens of Bowie just to see something different besides a couple of townhouses.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we call for a motion? All right, well, no other discussion, then I'll, I'll accept a motion from the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bird, I recognize you.
All right, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I wanted to just say quickly, I like to piggyback on what Ms. Avery said. And please, Mr. Asini, as well as council, take that on, on board as far as thinking outside the box, which was offered up by one of our citizens. I think that's something that we definitely need to reach towards. And that's, that way, you get more buy-in from the community. And again, to piggyback off Lisa Avery, the whole going to quickly, medium to high-density residential is not, is not the answer, I believe. So with that being said, though, as this is just a, the first initial step, I would like to move for approval of this amendment, A 8589, Tag 04, to the Bowie New Town Center Basic Plan with the two conditions as stated. And it's really based upon the criteria that's set forth within the county zoning ordinance that, and generally speaking, the plan conforms to the general plan and the master plan of the area. The positive economic analysis presented by the applicants, as well as it's founded by Mr. Scholes, justifies the size and the scope of this project. And this plan promotes the health, safety and welfare of the present and future citizens of the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Okay, you referred Mr. Bird's motion, may I have a second?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, to reiterate what Mr. Bird said, I second it with conditions from the staff included. The two conditions, yeah, approval of the plan with the conditions.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion and we have a first and a second. Are we ready for the vote? And I'll do a roll call vote. So I'll start with Mr. Scholes.
Aye.
Ms. Trass.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Avery.
Aye.
Mr. Bird.
Aye.
And the Chair. And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right. I really appreciate everybody's attention and well-thought-out input to this meeting tonight. And the next meeting will be August, well, this, will now go before the city council on August 3rd, 8 o'clock PM. And I will be there to present the findings of this meeting and certainly carry forth some of the concerns that Ms. Avery, Mr. Bird, Ms. Trass, and Mr. Scholes have put forth. And I will make those conversations known to the city council on August 3rd. And with that, this portion of the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is, I guess, the approval of the minutes from June 23rd, 2020. We have a motion for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
So moved, second.
Move, move the second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Eyes have it. Minutes are approved. Folks, I want to thank you for, and we're getting better at these Zoom meetings. I appreciate it. And Mr. Stevens and Mr. Minor, thank you for your support, as well as Mr. Hoag for the background support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And with that, everybody have a good evening.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.